Just a few items on the consent agenda. We'll be removing item 5.01. And we'll probably put that on the next meetings agenda. And then we'll be removing 8.17 to vote separately. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Settle those two items?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we will vote on item 8.17 separately. Do I hear a motion to approve 8.17?
Aye.
Any discussion? Yeah, okay. We'll take a roll upon this one. Go ahead and go Tom.
Aye.
Arish? He's abstaining because his son is possibly on, you know, being employed.
Yeah.
I motion carries through the way. Also, I may have to leave at nine o'clock, so just want to let you know that.
Okay, tonight we are doing the report on the district and building goals. These goals were established last summer by the administration during a strategic planning session. They were then brought to, they were then brought to the board, and the board had the opportunity for feedback during a retreat. And then they were approved in the late August, early September by the Board of Education as the district goals. The first pillar that we addressed, that the strategic plan has five pillars: student performance, community involvement, workforce engagement, healthy, safe, and caring schools, operational efficiency, and fiscal responsibility. The first pillar is student performance. And Dr. Berkowitz is going to address the three goals that were developed for this year and how they were addressed during the course of the year. A committee of parents, administrators, and teachers were volunteers to take a look at what is, what exists in terms of student engagement surveys and also to analyze and determine what it was that our district, from their perspective, values as important in terms of student engagement. So we talked about social and emotional issues. We talked about activities and academics. So we did some intensive research and found that there are, there actually is one in particular instrument that's used to assess high school student engagement. And then we looked at middle school and elementary school. The difficulty in meeting, because we're meeting with parents, administrators, and teachers, we've been meeting after school. We had to make a meeting at 6:30, so to be fair to the parents who are on the committee, so we were not able to schedule a final meeting until tomorrow night. The recommendation that I'm bringing to the committee tomorrow night will be that we purchase the high school instrument because it's been tried and true and it's pretty intensive. We have some guidance document for the middle school. And what we would like to do is see what happens when we get to see the entire high school instrument and kind of make our own middle school instrument based on the guidance that we have and how to develop those. And I'm also going to recommend that we don't go below the third grade and that we make an even simpler one for the three through five. So I'm bringing that information all back to them tomorrow night. And that decision, or some other decision, will be made tomorrow night. And then we'll be prepared to create the baseline next year as we go into the year. Recommendations are not to do it right immediately. Common district expectations for teaching plan, planning and monitoring of teacher plans. That got complicated as everything is right now because as the teachers planned this year, they were working between the old standards and the new standards. Some of the old ways and the new ways. Principals were working with employees and observing. They were doing walkthrough observations. Lessons were one day or multiple day. So we determined after a much discussion at this point in time that plans would need always to be available on the teachers' desks. Administrators will be doing at least three to five walkthroughs so that they can walk in at any time without planning to walk in and see what the teacher is supposed to be doing. And the plans are supposed to be shared with the administrators at the time of an announced observation, which has always been the case. Or at any time the administrator chooses to ask to see them. They can give examples of the Common Core unit and what that looks like, and they're expected to follow that format. We have always developed our professional development plan based on either a survey or our notice in the analysis of the teacher evaluation. This year, we almost had no choice. Our needs and the state's requirements were about the same. So we used the data from the teacher evaluations to know what we needed to be able to offer. And the state required that we train the teachers in the Common Core standards and the National Education Technology standards. The entire evaluation and observation process, which is changing this year, next year, and moving forward, there's going to be tremendous amount of training needed, both for the teachers and the administrators. So that's going to definitely drive our priorities. The first goal in the area of community involvement was to find and/or or develop a survey to measure community satisfaction. The parent advisory council worked on this during the school year. They reviewed sample surveys as well as considered the option of taking bits and pieces and creating your own survey. After looking at a number of surveys, they recommended that we pursue a parent satisfaction survey that is produced by the Center for Effective Teaching. And that's a very well-known, actually, we gave their climate survey for students this year, and it worked out nicely. It's a very well-known, established group that has been in business for, oh gosh, I remember it in the eighties, and it probably existed before that. But Effective Teaching talks about, you know, what makes good schools. And so it's based on their tenants. The survey is on order and will be administered next January. At one time, we were looking at it in the spring and fall, and the council recommended that we wait until January because they felt that, for one thing, with the new schools in place, they had an aspect of being reorganized. Some people having different principals, different groups of teachers being together. Some of what you have in the survey has to do with the school climate and culture. And you don't necessarily, you're not necessarily prepared to do that in October when it's essentially a new school. The other piece of it though was from a practical standpoint. The parents felt that January, for example, was a time that people were more likely to engage in a survey because they weren't as busy with things like sports after school and nice weather activities. The second goal, which is true for the rest of the remaining pillars, that there's always a goal about capturing the baseline data for the community satisfaction and engagement scorecard. And so this is what it looks like. This is our first time doing this. The first goal was to evaluate community satisfaction. And we had indicated that there would be a number of items that we would use to assess that. By themselves, these numbers really don't mean that much. You know, one year's data is not significant. The idea is that from now on, you're going to be building on these. You'll have cumulative data over the years. And you'll start to see either patterns developing, positive or negative, or you'll see improvement or decline. And obviously, you want to go in the improvement route. The budget vote was 55.7% positive, which that we actually do have data on, and that was not inconsistent with most of the past votes. As we've talked about, the survey has not been done yet. Impartial hearings are related to the special education department. And what we've been looking for are impartial hearings that are initiated by the parents because if somebody initiated such a hearing, that would indicate dissatisfaction. There were none of those this year. There was one appealed to the commissioner and one lawsuit filed. The lawsuit was about a student accident. The other part of the goal had to do, or the second goal had to do with engaging the community. And this is something that after doing it the first time, the administrators, as we worked together this summer, will look toward to find a better way of collecting the data through the year and making it a little more specific. Essentially, all of the schools reported about their events at the school level in terms of, you know, the bigger things. I mean, certainly, there were some things that were just one classroom related. But what I captured here is really anything that was more or less a whole school type of event. Or at the high school, for example, maybe a whole grade level where you had something like a college night where, you know, maybe mostly junior parents were there. So they range between 100 and 380 participants at all of these events. And the feedback from the principals was that they felt that the attendance at these events was quite good. PTA, you can see, is on the lower side. Average was approximately six people at a meeting, six parents at a meeting. This took into account, for example, the fact that a high school did not have a PTA this year. So their number was zero. And then you had some places that averaged a little higher, 10 or 12. And the district average was approximately six. Parents who served on various committees during the year. This includes things like district committees, like Jill's Engagement Committee, as well as things like the site-based teams, the safety committees at the buildings, the health committees, character education. There were 49 parent members. The bullying committee was another one, district-wide. Parent volunteers in the four schools, 765. Hits on the website, this is something that we were actually just talking today to one of our employees about finding a better way of getting this information. Our Mary Corcel, who takes care of the website, thinks that she has a more accurate way of reporting this so that it's not just a number of hits, but more specific information. And she's going to try to get it for us for this year. But at this point, this was our technology person who provided it. The returning visitors are sometimes hard to gauge because every time an employee in the district turns on the computer to the internet, for whatever reason, it automatically goes to the homepage. So that would count as a hit. We looked at percentage of parent portal users, NutriKids users, and school messenger users. And what we used for this was a family number of 1,013 families in the district. The parent portal, that only applies to secondary students at this point because they don't use, the elementary schools don't use the e-school data system. So right now, it's only available to secondary parents. Thirty-two percent of all the families in the district use that. That's why it's a significantly lower number. NutriKids, 89%, and School Messenger, 84%. We include School Messenger, just so you know, because it's not automatic that it goes out to everyone in the district because we have people who have asked to be excluded from the list. And then there are some people who sign on for extra messages beyond, excuse me, beyond the emergency closings. So this is really people who have initiated their own accounts and can change the settings and what they want to get from the phone calls. And so that's a pretty good number as well. Board meeting attendance ranged from about 25 in the lower months to 125, with approximately eight of the meetings of the school year from roughly October through February averaging over 110 at a meeting. And then Nancy actually kept a list of participants who spoke. And we had a total of 197 this year, which, without having last year's numbers, we all know that's way up. The next pillar is workforce engagement. And there was a similar goal here as to the community, and that was to find or develop a survey to measure workforce satisfaction. I had a committee of employees that met several times through the year. These included administrators, teachers, and support staff. The survey was administered on June 4th and 5th. Results will be available to employees this month by building, as well as discussed at the conference day before school begins in September. And then the committee is going to meet again to revise the survey as necessary. How we'll use the information is that the principals will be using the information within the building level to look at the areas that are pertinent to their buildings. And we had about 30 questions in the survey. And the district will have a district report that we used to address the more global issues. And again, that's something that we'll have to tweak, you know, every time you do something for the first time. People will have suggestions about how to improve it. But we had excellent participation, partially because we chose to do it at faculty meeting, partially because it was administered online. And I think that made it a little quicker. The average survey took about 10 minutes for a person to complete. There was an option to include comments. And of course, that's individualized by how much a person chose to write. Each section of the survey, there were about five sections, had a space for comments. So somebody could have written five different comments about different topics. The topics included things like safety issues, you know, how safe do you feel in the building? It could have had to do with collaboration, teamwork, that sort of thing. And so there were about five different areas. The next goal was, again, to capture the baseline data for workforce satisfaction and engagement. Survey, although it's done, it's still going to take a bit of time to put it into scorecard format in terms of what it means. We talked about use of exit interviews. We have not had any exit interviews to speak of this year yet. I mean, generally, people don't leave in the middle of the year. So if an excess teacher, for example, is not somebody that you would do an exit interview on, if somebody were to choose to leave the district on his or her own accord to go to another district, that would be something we would want to talk to them about. The employee attendance rate was about 95%. We looked at longevity because the longer somebody stays in the district, the idea is they must be somewhat satisfied. So we have had, we have 42% of our employees, all employees, administrators, teachers, support staff, 42% of them have 10 to 19 years in the district, and 9% more than 20. Number of grievances filed by any of the units this year, zero. Workforce engagement, we looked at the percentage who participated in professional development as well as the percentage who participated in 10% or more professional development activities over the year. We had 70% at least, 1, 39% more than 10 or more. For the committees, and this is another thing that we're going to have to work out a little bit better for next year. We took the numbers of the teachers who served on the various committees. But when you look at this, 191 serving of the committees is really more than the number of teachers we have. So obviously, there are duplicates. We have to actually go through and do a listing so that we can get a percentage which could give us a better idea. And we could actually still correct this for this year. We could actually go back and go through lists. But at this point, you know, it was after we had all of the data and you come up with 191, you realize that's more than 100%. The number of chaired committees, led professional development activities, or served on the building leadership team was going to be five. And then performance evaluations are still coming in. And so that material has not been able to be aggregated yet. As we go through this, though, just a reminder that the board approved tonight a list of meeting dates for next year. And then those meeting dates are also presentation schedules. And each one of these pillars is going to have a separate audit presented on it. So I forget the month for, for example, workforce engagement. I believe it's in the fall sometime. You will then, at that time, have a full scorecard for this year's work. So right now, you're seeing it now, but it's not complete because it's an artificial timeframe for having that information. It was just to get that baseline data for this year as much as we could. But when we actually do the first actual audit in the fall, this will all be filled out and it will be in a better format in terms of correcting, for example, the number versus the percentage. Michelle is going to talk about operational efficiency and fiscal responsibility. We get an alcohol.
The first goal that we had to look at was to utilize our operating efficiencies to be able to maintain or enhance some of our instructional programs. One of the areas that we presented before in April was our energy end savings. One of the things that we've done with some of our energy end savings, we reduced our utility budget by approximately $60,000. We were able to upgrade some of our outdated HPC controls, which in effect will help us be able to save more money. When we implemented NutriKids last year, through April, we had about over $200,000 deposited directly into the online account. That has saved our staff time in the cafeteria, a lot of the time, to put bank deposits together and do those types of things. As we get more efficient, we'll be able to reduce the general fund subsidy of the school lunch program. For next year's budget, I believe, we cut it by $8,000. Online requisitions, we were typing purchase orders onto typewriters in the computer and then sending them by courier down to the business office to be signed and taken care of. We implemented online requisition entry, which was part of the software equipment that we already had. We've been able to save a lot of staff time doing that. Increased online banking. We have been able to do more and more wires through online banking. We've been able to cut the cost of producing checks and the costs associated with that and the time. We discussed before, we use transportation banking software. We eliminated another bus for over $65,000. At the high school, we've been able to change staff on new software to be able to regulate temperature controls in the building. So if it's not in the winter, when it's very, very cold in the morning, you normally have your custodians come in extra early to start up the boilers and take a look around. With this software, we're able to remotely, the people that have access to this, can look at the controls, where the building temperatures are in each area of the building from home, and be able to regulate it from there. The next thing was we started to put our baseline data together. So under monetary fiscal responsibility, we looked at our audits. Each year, we had at least one internal audit and one external audit. The internal audit had no significant findings. The external audit was an unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion we can receive. We've maintained our 212 bond rating by Moody's, that's a private, private evaluation. We added 12 new fiscal policies and we revised five existing policies during the year. Five-year budget plan, we discussed during the budget presentations that we went back and we do five years of expenditure history line by line. And as a result of that, we were able to reduce the budget by $300,000 without impacting any programs. We also took a look at the long-range technology plan and looked at where we were purchasing items, whether it was state contract facilities, to make sure we're getting the most benefit of it. Under monetary operating efficiencies, we took a look at similar school analysis. We looked at school districts that were compared to with our scorecards, which is Pauling, Red Book, Millbrook, Rydeck. And we established baseline data for them. In other words, we started to rank where we are across per student, debt service, special ed. And we ranked them, went through five right now, to see if there are areas that we particularly should be looking at. Over the past year, we issued some visits and RFPs. Went back to maximize state aid, we filed for state aid. And we had additional revenue on decreasing expenditures of approximately $228,000. We expect to receive that same thing next year. Survey, we participated in a superintendent's reporting on the survey today on, it seems like, almost on a weekly basis with both county, regional, and state organizations. We related to stimulus expenditures and mandates. One margin that we did this year was the upfront mandate survey. Survey results showed that there were no major differences from our similar districts. Budget emails, we received, we put a link out there for budget input. We received and responded to nine for responses via the website.
The last pillar is healthy, safe, and caring schools. And the first goal for the year was to develop a comprehensive anti-bullying program. Steve Valbisher actually recorded on this a couple of months ago. He chaired a district committee comprised of parents and staff. They looked at various programs, talked about different approaches, and chose something called the Oldest Program to implement district-wide in 2012, 2013. He has been trained to train others in the program. So next year, we will not have to spend money on this. He will go around to faculty meetings and train teachers. And he will also meet with students and talk to students about bullying. The second goal was to develop or find a student climate survey. The program that was selected includes such a survey. And we will begin as any administration next year with the purchase of the program. This actually, these two goals go somewhat hand-in-hand with the Dignity for All Students Act, which was a new requirement as of July 1st. While the Dignity for All Students Act is, in some respects, a little bit broader because it's not just bullying, but it's harassment. And it encompasses a wide range of, you know, they talk about specific types of harassment. Sexual harassment, gender harassment, virtually anything, you know. Weight, you know, student's weight can't be a basis for harassment or discrimination. So we've updated our policies to comply with this. And bullying program goes hand-in-hand. We're also looking at training, specialized training for the administrators and the social workers in the buildings. That would be a more encompassing kind of harassment training. And then again, to capture the baseline data on these areas. In terms of healthy schools, we looked at BMI results. The school district is required to get this information from various groups of students in different grade levels every two years. The number here is from last year because this year was the off year. Forty-eight percent of the students who were in this study in our district had what was considered by the state to be a healthy weight, to be a healthy weight. Student attendance and employee attendance, you can see the students do better than we did. Not to use that as an excuse, but things like the term relief and long-term leaves come into play and something like this too, which is some explanation about. We're going to have to try to be as good as the students. Food inspections, there were eight inspections done across the district this year, and there were no violations in any of them. In terms of assessing the caring schools, I mentioned to you that this year, not having the Oldest Program in place, we used the Center for Effective Teaching survey. And the best we could come up with, because it wasn't exactly aimed at the idea of caring schools, but the category that seemed to fit the best was the category of safe and orderly schools. And the percentage district-wide positive responses to students who felt that they were in safe and orderly schools was 51%. That's a concern, and I think we'll all have to work on that. But it'll be interesting. It's possible that the next survey will address this issue a little more depth. I might have more specific questions, but that would help us get at the information we need to get at to make them together. we need to get at to make them together. Participation in clubs such as Youth Against Racism, Gay Straight Alliance, Leo. Those are all kinds of caring, service-oriented clubs. We have 220 students in that, that's across the district. The elementary schools don't really have as many clubs of that nature. They have more academic kinds of clubs, or garden clubs, computer clubs. But it's not to say they haven't participated in a lot of activities. I mean, there have been all kinds of charity fundraisers and, or, you know, kids events where they have been able to support the community in one way or another. Number of bullying complaints in the district, 63. Number of contacts to local crisis unit. You might remember us telling you at some point this year that we've seen an increase in the number of troubled students in the district. And this is baseline data, and that we haven't collected it this way before. I think 10 is a very high number, and supports the assertion that we're seeing more troubled kids. Four of those were at the middle school, and six were at the high school. Assessing schools, this we take more from the idea of accidents as well as things like the building conditions and also violent incidents by students. Total number of accidents in the district, we had 10 student accident claims, 21 worker compensation claims. Data is a violent incident reporting system that the state requires us to comply with each year. And it ranges from some very minor things like pushing, you know, which is not that uncommon, particularly in emery grades, to more severe things like possession of a weapon. Overall, we had 68 for the district, most of them of the more minor sort. And the buildings, of course, have their own specific information and know exactly what these reports are. We're doing this from a district perspective to get the global view and to see if we can reduce that number from year to year. Building condition survey is something that the facilities people or with the architects on, and overall, it has, the buildings have a rating of satisfactory. Documented number of safety drills. I never realized, even though I knew there were a lot of drills, that we had 72 drills this year that included bus safety, lockdown, fire, medical lockdown, which is more like we practice an AED drill, just to see, you know, somebody had, was in cardiac arrest, and somebody had to perform CPR and then get the AED. Emergency go-home drill, which is required by the state also. That's the one where we let students out about 10 minutes early, and sheltering. In some of those, for example, the lockdown and the medical lockdown, the school resource officer is involved, no matter which building it's at. And he then debriefs with the school principal and the safety team to discuss how it went and to provide suggestions for improvement. And the fire inspections all went with this test. Next steps, the building leadership teams will receive some follow-up work with AMRAids from the American Society for Equality. They've worked with her a couple of times before. That's the last week of June after school is out. The board will meet in August to talk about district goals for next year. The administrators will meet in August to update strategic plan. As we said, some of the work on the scorecards needs to be finessed so that we have better data and can report it more accurately. And then the district building goals for 2012 and '13 will be presented at the board meeting on September 18. Questions?
A lot of the data presented here, when people, when they're showing here, they present this year's information, possibly whatever else is coming, so we can...
Yes.
Okay. One thing I found missing that could be helpful to find out with assessing caring at the administrative level is maybe to have the number of events, like, you know, sometimes they do cold drives, or, you know, like toys, or, you know, we could add the number of events that we have as administrative students. It gives an idea of what they do. And one last question about the reporting of high incidence rate. Do we have numbers from other schools on how much they report?
I don't think that's public. Are you aware of any? Sorry, that quality on the report card, I think, is not an issue of importance. And this is the first time that we've had that... We've been doing it for years, but this is the first time that we're actually collecting baseline data in these categories. I mean, we could technically go back a couple of years to see how we're doing, but, you know, we have to start somewhere. And the idea was, with using these scorecards for the first time, this would be our first year of data. Yes. Been in place over 10 years.
Well, first, it's taken a long, long time to get here, but I am happy to see that we're starting to give this in a good format. I mean, it makes it a lot easier for the board and the community to see what's going on. Just a couple of issues. Things tend, a different event might be added with the state to help. Concussions, we might want to add that.
Yeah.
And then, things like when we have these crazy viruses or something like that, so how many kids were affected, maybe start documenting and see if we can find anything in the trends. The committees, the people that served and led, were they unique people, or?
That's what we have to, yeah. That's what we identify as something we have to correct.
I think both numbers are good, that they should have. They may not have to be in that, but when you do these audits, all this stuff ought to be a little more detailed. I definitely think the attendance needs to be, I mean, I don't know what the acceptable number for teachers is, but, you know, eternity in that, certainly understandable, but that should be narrowed down.
It's not just teachers, it's every single employee.
Well, I think it should be broken down. I think you should have, there's how many teachers, there's non-teaching, or at least teach and non-teaching, something along those lines. So I think that was it for that. And then another question I have is, the NUTR Kids money, does that go in an interest-bearing account?
Yeah, with low interest we got these days, I'm sorry. I think it might be like 25 percent, I think.
Okay, all right. All right, that's all I have. Okay, we will go to comments to the board. All right, I'll go to the board.
I was wondering what was happening with some of the plugs at the elementary school level? It was like pain or two, some of them don't kind of make sense to have anymore. And one of the ones that I saw was kind of disappeared there was Green deliver. Between the two schools, I mean, NASA has 12 classes next year. So we're going to pay somebody over $800, so people can pay notes. 12 classrooms, and between the two schools, we're spending over $1,600 on it. So basically, buy six cans per student, and that'd be really disappointing for real now. In fact, to me, the money would actually better spent on field trips down Main Street post-docs, and then, you know, you can actually walk over and see how the kids are performing. It did not work well, you can see that. I mean, what's happening with the art plug, and books plug, and the computer plug, and the fire plug, are we still duplicating this between the two buildings?
I will double-check with the president. I know we talked about NUTR Kids the other day, but I haven't spoken to the primary principal about the plugs recently. I will double-check to get an answer out to you.
Certainly, we should, necessarily, just because you're up here, this should be... This should be sufficient for this question.
And then I had another question. I saw that we're updating things like code conda, stuff like that. And since I read this handbook every year, from, you know, grade, you taught in high school, cover to cover, it really would be nice if it was better written. Text that was added was now justified text, even though the rest of it wasn't justified text, but also we don't justify text, it's really difficult to read it from the bottom down. You have a huge list that is inconsistent with active voice path, you know, Jared, what you're going to do, subject is always different. Sometimes it's, you know, students, sometimes it's you, sometimes it's users, I... The pupil, person, student, individual. If it's not typical for my kids to write that one, even, you know, because they're going to get a date, I don't think that that's the stuff that this whole system, so I would appreciate it if that was...
Well, let's address this here, because we've been talking about this in side bits, right?
I've been talking about this since I entered this school.
I mean, and I can't argue that it's a lot, and you wouldn't really read it. So, I mean, but I don't have an answer to that, but maybe, maybe, please, Rob? Right, Rob? Morrison?
Yeah.
Maybe he's again, you know, again.
And we can get a pen and a circle and a pen, it's kind of... And what happens is that you add a new section, and it's inconsistent with the section before, and then you set them out after, because, you know, and literally then nobody's rereading what book you're for and what's after to see if you can load it and read it, it's not sensible. And as a result, you kind of lose faith, because a lot of these things can actually be wound up into a quiet paragraph, and then you cannot... Yeah, you can just, yeah, you start changing the section. In fact, if you have a pen and a pen, the personal pen is the easiest. And then, some of this baseline stuff that we talked about tonight, you also indicated that you could go by parent comments and stuff like that to get a sense of whether it was positive or negative, and you communicated that that would happen, that it would only happen.
That's something I think will be important in terms of on the leading communities versus inferior summary of communities. But I mean, certainly, the board has discussed multiple proof. I can comment that this evening, you know, the input there is too much, and that sort of thing has impacted. And it's not, we're just putting in place the data that impacts essentially here. But then it's when you talk about things and use it to develop goals that you take into accounts those other softer pieces. And, you know, I think that certainly the board knows what the community was happy, unhappy with. Sure. It will be unhappy.
But we were trying, I mean, you know, this conversation, we're trying to quantify our goals. And the thinking might go out, well, you're talking about comments toward, how is that written? And you would be, um, said, oh, you can see, kind of get a sense of what was positive, common, or negative. So just 100 things for...
I think the board, maybe what's positive or...
Well, doesn't the surveys, right, that's been good for parents, right, community? I mean, I think that's really the best way to do it.
I see your point.
Yeah.
We can work on that and stuff in terms of better finding out what list goes. You're right.
What kind of matter to find out more of is how many of our teachers use their websites and help make them, right? We're encouraging teachers to use this, you know, data, and help teachers. Previously, a piece of updated literature, so looking with the parent portal, different teachers. The rainbow for what's like, I know that younger teachers are more likely to do that, but younger teachers at every level.
Can I ask a question? I wanted to go to the parent portal, I don't do that one. So is that something that's required, or is that already, right? I know, but pages are not required, okay.
The parts that any secondary parent have access to that has nothing to do with participation are attendance and private notices, the four cards.
That's the bare minimum. Everyone has it, yeah?
That's automatically there as a function of the system. The part that I think Jennifer's talking about is using the grade book.
Right.
And there are concerns about the grade book piece for a variety of these parent teachers who have said that it's inaccurate at times. Math teachers who said it's done on calculations. This is part of the software package.
And I've asked about this at my university meetings, or advisory committee. I would like to see my child's grades. You show the numbers that 30 percent or... They'll know for parents, they'll actually log on, look at the parent portal. My issue with it is, at the moment, all it does is show what I'm going to see 24 hours later in paper copy. I'm sure we did spend quite a bit of money on this software, I think they probably use...
It's actually part of the student management system.
But I'm sure that it's much more powerful to, you know, the work we do, see it for everyone, right? To get more out of it.
I just took two on mine versus others. You know, I can see it ongoing every week. Any else?
You actually have to build it, but I'm just going to stay covered.
Okay. Do you have any other?
My question basically is, as all of you know, with regards to privacy and what expectations parents have in regards to that. Because my recent experience, as all of you know, was really mousy, to say the least. I received an email, which was a copy of another parent's email, which Dr. Powell forwarded to me. And then I did what? And then that same email appeared in the results of my foil, and it blacked out. So, and this is required saying, there was emails that were sent to me that I got two copies of, where in one spot it's blacked out, in another spot it's not blacked out. What are our parents' rights and expectations? I mean, who's making the decision as to what is private and what's not? I mean, I would like to send an email today to a member of the staff here, and I didn't do that, because I don't know where it's going to end up, and who's going to decide what's private and what's not. And quite frankly, do what you want, and apologize later, this isn't a great policy to go with. So, before somebody puts in a foil, I'd like to know what is the district's policy, or if you have one, with regards to what could somebody, anybody, whether it be the superintendent or the janitor, forward without being required to, I'm all.
I don't, I don't have a question.
There is a point.
There is a point. So, I don't think, I mean, the next question is...
Central attorneys have recommended against policy. This is something that certainly the attorney must be able to report when we met her, which we, you know, this, and she can come to the session and have it once, and then write. Obviously, a matter of laws, different, blackouts come from the attorneys.
So the attorneys actually did the blackouts online? Okay, so we need new returns, because they sent you things, literally, that made the exact same things were blacked out here, and when that same email got over to someone else, it was left?
It might have, I know it sounds crazy, but it has something to do with who's sending them to whom. If it's between parents, it's sometimes allowable, whereas if it's between an employee and a parent, it isn't. I mean, I'm not the expert in that by far, but I know that there were issues that I had to answer questions about who did it, or what goal they had in the district, whether they were employees or parents.
Let me have a second question, so you can take the example. You wanted to send something to a teacher today, or a staff member, but you're worried about that staff member forwarding to somebody else.
Or somebody, someone deciding to foil, or somebody deciding to ask for it. Because I've learned that every email anybody ever sends is kept forever. Anything that says staffandthefield.com on it is kept forever. And now I feel like, well, and I have publicly, everybody knows, I'm sure, because Facebook is everywhere, that I told everybody, be aware of this, as, you know, I've been told, be aware. Anything you put down, it finds its way out, and I want to know. And you talk to the lawyers, you're saying, how can a policy be left? That's really a winner in my book, because I can sue you for that. You're arbitrarily society, person to person, whether or not what I said has a right to apply. I mean, that makes you the second...
Education law determines what's portable and what's not. And even if there is a policy or no policy, but the education law says this piece of information is not portable, then it's not portable. Even if you don't have a policy on it. Usually, there are specific categories where just information...
Usually there are specific categories where just information, certain information is affordable or not.
Right, okay, so then, so Dr. Powell sends me a copy of someone's email, which she did, and then I foil and that email folds within the spectrum of what I foiled. And then the lawyer blacks it out. So was Dr. Powell working along when she sent it to me?
So you went down the floor. Some communication between you and her is one thing.
No, it was the same exact email. It was the same email sent to her by a third party. She forwarded it to me.
Of that email, so I can speak to it specifically, but I'm thinking generally that it's the education law.
Right, but my question is, is who's deciding when that gets blacked? Because it's not uniform. Some things get forwarded, some things don't. I mean, you get copies of some things and some things get blacked out. I mean, there was somebody talking about a sick parent. That did get locked out. I mean, and then the piece of paper that he made me regarding what's, you know, gets knocked out and what doesn't, says, well, this person. Well, how much more personal than a sick parent could you get? I mean, I just, there's no uniformity. It did not make the least of sense to me in any way how these decisions are made. And I think that the board in this district needs policy on that. And whether the legal people think it's right or not, the parents deserve it. I've never heard from several people in the last several days how they've now been going back to their emails to see what they mailed for fear of where's it going to show up and who's going to decide. And well, okay, so if Dr. Powell forwards it for some reason to Michelle, well, does it now have stop protection anymore or is it protected? Well, if parents aren't that smart, I'm not that, I'll speak for myself. I'm not that smart to understand the nuances of what. So I think the district needs to make it so that parents can feel.
I think privacy is an issue that's not just school district. So, I mean, I think it's worthy of discussion. There's no, you know, that's something that you guys might want to have on the retreat, but, I mean, as I think, I mean, you know, you, I mean.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, you know, you have, you know, I, whatever actions I take, I have to feel like, man, if that's going to be on the front page of the paper tomorrow, no matter what, then, you know, I better write things in a way that it should be written. And if I have a really, if I'm mad at something or mad at a teacher or a staff member or upset, I mean, I'm making a personal enemy. You know, once you start writing emails, and then if you take, I mean, the verbal, you know, the whole unverbal, you know, gets messed up. I mean, that's happened more than once. So, you know, that's my talking area.
I would like to have, I have, you know, your science.
But, but, you know, I mean, it's been an unusual year, a whole point of stuff. So I think it's raised issues that really haven't necessarily been seen in the past.
I can do such a thing, it's like, well, do you think Dr. Powell? We've encouraged you to do the same, but why would that affect you?
Right, so, I mean, so, yes, I think we can discuss it. And that's the best we can do tonight, is put it on the, is put it on the agenda board. Anybody else? Comments from the board? Number two.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I do have this, okay. Huh, okay. Sorry, I'm going to please ask.
I apologize, principals, if you ask right here. But, and the community has questions, I should know. We have building inspections in here.
Parts. We are starting with the elementary principals. They've developed building goals that, for the most part, align somewhat with the district goals in terms of the five pillars. But different buildings may have had a different focus based on what the needs were in their particular situation. The elementary schools, for the first time this year, actually joined together and developed joint goals. And so they will be reporting together this evening as well on their progress.
Better? Hi, everybody. Our first joint goal that we worked collaboratively with Hagan and Nassau Schools together, and this, as Doctor Powell mentioned, was the result of work that our impact teams did over the summer. We decided to work together towards a joint list of goals. And the first had to do with student performance. By the end of October, administrators and teachers will analyze test data and current best practices to determine strategies that can be implemented to improve performance during the rest of the year. We collected and reviewed student test data to identify those students who needed additional support. We looked at DRA data, STERS, New York State Test Assessment data, and also AIMS Web data. We compiled kindergarten screening, New York test scores, DRA, and rates of attendance for students not meeting state standards for each student. We did, we put that data together in a way that allowed us to look at the continuum from when a student started in Spacken Hill. So we could see all of that data in one place from kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade, which was really helpful in many ways. Very early in the year, we had a very good picture of those students who we felt needed additional support. Some who needed maybe a little additional support and identified those students who really we felt needed significant support. As far as our response to the data, we restructured the way AIS was delivered at Nassau. Not so much with mathematics, but definitely in the area of ELA. Some very specific instructional strategies that teachers employed. And with that, I would just mention, we had a couple of grade levels in particular. Eileen can speak for Hagan, but for Nassau, a couple of grade levels in particular, where we had reading scores that were very troubling, well below where they needed to be. And from our grade level meetings and RTI meetings at the beginning of the year, we really adopted kind of a single-minded pursuit with several students that more than anything, the most important thing for those students was to improve their reading. And we knew that if that meant maybe science or social studies being pushed to the wayside a little bit, that we needed to do that in order to focus on ELA and math. I think we did a decent job monitoring their progress. Foundations used, especially in kindergarten and first grade. Kindergarten or seniors get head pub. That was something that we did at Nassau that where we identified students and they were able to come to school in the morning, Monday through Friday, as many or as few days as they wanted to work for half an hour in our computer lab, whether it was on Manfax or Lexia to help with reading, instruction, and it ended up being very successful. I think in both our buildings, RTI continues to be a real strength. We met every six weeks to review student progress, set goals, and adjust instructional strategies. I, you know, say, for me, coming from a couple of other different districts, my experience with RTI here has been pretty phenomenal. I've been blown away by the amount of time that we set aside and spent talking about students who need additional support. Not students that are necessarily classified, but just your typical student that might be struggling. It's definitely, you need to Spacken Hill, and something for us to be proud of.
And a move forward position under this goal. We're thinking out, pilot in this year, the MATHS program, which will give us individual hours of students. So we look forward to the next full year and looking how the student performance will be in the district MATHS program in September, probably winter, and then once again in spring. That adds the data that we're using as well to get having their student performance.
Community involvement, development of broader, more inclusive percentage of kindergarten involvement in the school community. We collected baseline data on events that parents were able to attend. Though we're likely need to do this now as a reconfigured, reorganized elementary schools. Just as we're hoping to say, thinking in line, being very mindful of concerns that have been brought forth through community involvement. The attendance at board meetings concerned about, how do we structure events and enable people to have students involved in buildings? How do we still maintain their involvement, which we value so much? Because we know the programs in both of our buildings are so much richer when we have a parent involvement, it's important. So we can, I, the data that we collected now, although we, what we can pair that in terms of next year, that will be a lens that we can look at and see what's happening now and how the staff wants to get to the end in our last slide. And you go forward position, there is a place to connect, those are the position of the blocking data, getting block position response to the off.
With regards to workforce engagement, we'll maintain the high level of staff involvement and engagement by effectively streamlining the process and the outcomes of committee work. For Nassau, we had 27 teachers serve on building level committees. Our safety team, which was a real focus for us this year, and a number I'm particularly pleased with, that grew from seven to 17 members. So obviously, that 20, that number of 27 really includes a lot of the safety team members. Committee membership information was made available to staff. We did feel at the beginning of the year that it was important to share information with all of the staff so that they knew who was on what committee. The other message I know that we talked about at the beginning of the year was just the idea that everybody really needs to do their fair share. And teachers, you know, they cycle through different parts of their career. Sometimes they have more time than others to give to committee work. But the idea that if you haven't served on a committee in a few years, that maybe it's time to give it another go if you got burnout from previous time. But the idea that everybody really does need to do their fair share in as far as the committee work goes. 29 teachers at Hagan serve on building level committees. And another important part was the fact that we distributed committee meeting minutes to all staff so they knew what was happening in those committees.
Your operational efficiency is the responsibility. Back in the school year, our help was at the DIA 2% participation and a complete decline for the district energy savings program. As we review the data that's left in the ground, we're going to down that. We follow the district energy plan, which immediately got out of board. And we had not specific communication at district office.